Wonderful to be here with you on this afternoon. And this is a very special day and a very special week. Today is a a little-known holiday. It's a minor holiday on the Jewish calendar. And it is called Pesach Shani. The second Pesach. And basically, in the times of the temple, every Jewish person was obligated to bring a Paschal Lamb. And but there would be reasons that a person was not able to get to Jerusalem, or he was in a state of ritual impurity. And so, in the Torah itself already, we have the story of people who wanted a makeup. People who asked for a makeup Passover. And so, God spoke to Moses and said, yes, indeed, that one month later, on the fourteenth of Eir, you can you can make up for the Paschal Lamb that wasn't brought, the Pesach that was not brought on the the first time around. So it's called Pesach Shani, and the the message to each and every one of us, of course, is that one should never think that it's too late and that my opportunity has passed and I can't I can't accomplish or do something. We always have to be in a state of understanding that what we are meant to be accomplishing and what we're meant to achieve. And God's glorious purpose for each and every one of us is right in front of our face. It is right here, right now. And God has also given us the ability. Sometimes it requires some work. But there's a beautiful saying that it's never too late to become the person that you might have been. And I think that's very appropriate for Pesach Shani. This is really, we all have that opportunity. So that is the day that we're on today, the fourteenth of Eir, and it is the week in which we're going to be celebrating Lag Baomer. So Lag Baomer is the thirty-third day of the Omur, and what is the significance of Lag Baomer? Well, there are many different reasons and ideas brought behind it. I'm not going to be going into all of them, but just basically, it is the day of the Yoritzai, the day of the passing of Rabbi Shimon Bar Yochai. And he had said that on the day of his passing, he wants it to be a day of great rejoicing. And there was a there's a section in the Zohar called the Idra, where the 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 passing of Rabbi Shimon is actually described, and I'm going to share with you a little bit of that. So it says in the Idra, this is, there's a section in the Zohar called the Idra. Interestingly, Idra, anybody who studies a little bit of Kabbalah, they've heard of the Idra. Idra actually means a threshing floor. And it's interesting that that some of the teaching, a lot of the mystical teachings took place on a threshing floor. But that's really the whole idea of Kabbalah. That's the whole idea of what our internal spiritual mystical Jewish work is all about. It's about removing the chaff from the kernel. You know, what do we do on a threshing floor? We have to take a kernel. A kernel has got this juicy piece of wheat that's going to nourish us, but it has a chaff around it that may not be quite as edible. And a part that has to be broken off. And so, everything in life, we realize, has always got an element of a kernel, a kernel of truth, but something surrounding it that we have to that we have to get through. We're going to be discussing this in the Four Keys of Kabbalah coming up very soon. And our purpose in life is that we have to do a lot of threshing. We have to break the kernel, and we have to remove the negative, the concealment, from the positive. Sometimes we're encountering a difficult situation. Sometimes we might be dealing with a with a difficult person. Has anybody ever had that opportunity of having to deal with a difficult person? We all have, and the most effective way of dealing with a difficult person is realizing the truth, the kernel of truth that is inside of them. Seeing the person, that difficulty is just a facade. They're being obnoxious, or they're being rude, or they're being whatever it may be. It's just a facade on the outside. Inside, they have an Ashama, they have a soul. And when we learn to get through to that, when we speak to people, when we interact with people, then we can we can do a little bit of threshing, right? So it's interesting that a lot of the Zohar was taught in the Idra, is what's called the Idra. Raba in the Idra, zuta, there was a bigger section and a smaller section, but it all took place on a threshing floor. So we have learned that on the day the Rab Shimon Bar Yochai was to depart the world, he began arranging his teachings. So the disciples, they gathered together at the house of Rabbi Shimon. And there was his son, Rabbi Elazar, Rabbi Abba, the other disciples. So that the house was filled. The house was filled with his disciples, right? Imagine, what an amazing way to to depart from this world. When did Rabbi Shimon live? If anybody has any questions, by the way, feel free to jump in, unmute yourself and ask questions. Or you can chat, ask questions in the chat. Rabbi Shimon, I asked that question, so you wouldn't have to. Rabbi Shimon lived about a hundred, hundred and twenty of the Common Era. So around that, around that timeframe. So this was in Israel when things were pretty tough. Things were pretty difficult in Israel at that time, but he had his group of students that he taught. When Rabbi Shimon looked up and saw that the house was full, he wept and he said, "On another occasion, when I was deathly ill, Rabbi Pinchas Ben Yair was with me." Rabbi Pinchas Ben Yair, another great sage, was his son-in-law. While I was choosing my place, they granted me extra years until now. And when I returned to the living from that previous time, a fire surrounded me, and it never ceased, so that no person could come in to me without permission. Now I see that it has ceased, and so the house has filled up with visitors who apparently entered without without permission. So while they were sitting, Rabbi Shimon opened his eyes. And when Rabbi Shimon opened his eyes, he saw spirituality. He saw godliness. He didn't just describe it. He didn't just imagine it. Rabbi Shimon saw it. And he saw what he saw, the Zohar says. Then fire surrounded the house. Everyone fled, leaving only Rabbi Elazar, who was his son, and Rabbi Abba, who were worthy of receiving the Shekhina, the Divine Presence. The remainder of the disciples sat outside. Rabbi Shimon said to Rabbi Elazar, his son, "Go outside and see if Rabbi Yitzchok is here. I made a promise to him that he would basically, that he would live until the day of my passing. Tell him to put his affairs in order, then come and sit with me. Happy is his lot." Rabbi Shimon arose, and he sat again, smiling and happy, and he asked, "Where are the disciples?" Rabbi Elazar rose and brought them in. Rabbi Shimon raised his hand in prayer and made supplications with great joy. Then he said, "Those who were in the Idra are invited," the Idra is the threshing floor, right? They're invited to stay, but but not the rest of the visitors. The reason is because this teaching was so intense, it was it was explosive. A person had to be on the level to be able to study this mystical teaching if you weren't on the level, because they absorbed everything internally. You know, perhaps we have an advantage today because we don't internalize things in such a real way, we can learn much loftier ideas. But then they would take in, everything was taken in very personally, and if you were not on the right level, and you study this information, it could really have very bad effects on you. And the Talmud actually relates the story of four great rabbis who entered into the spiritual realm. And these great rabbis, you've heard of them, Rabbi Akiva, Rabbi Rabbi Shimon Ben Zoma, Rabbi Shimon Ben Azai, and Alicia Ben Avuya, these were great scholars of the Mishnah. And basically, out of the four that entered, only one of them came back into this world, into this reality unscathed, and that was Rabbi Akiva. Dangerous stuff. Again, back in those days, this was taught in such a way, it was it was a direct it was direct information. It was direct divine information. So Rabbi Shimon had to, you know, taking care of his students, he had to tell many of them to stay out. Nowadays, we want to be so inclusive. In those days, being inclusive could be very dangerous for the for the participants. So Rabbi Shimon then said, "Now is an auspicious time to reveal the secrets of the Torah. I wish to enter the world to come without shame. For the holy matters that I did not reveal until now, I wish to reveal in the presence of the Shekhina, so that no one will say that I left the world without fulfilling my task, and that I concealed in my heart until now, so that they would come with me to the world to come." Basically, he's basically saying, right, I have to fulfill my duty as being the teacher of mystical wisdom of this generation. I can't withhold any information. I've got to give it all over now. "And I'll present them to you. Rabbi Abba shall write. Rabbi Elazar, my son, will review them. The remaining disciples must whisper them in their hearts. I see that today is special for God and all the tzaddikim are rejoicing in my celebration." And celebration is called, in the Aramaic word, is called Hailula. Like a wedding celebration would be called a Hailula. So a Hailula is the kind of the mystical word for the day of the passing of a tzaddik. On the one hand, you know, you'd think tzaddik, a holy person passes away. It's a very sad day. But for the tzaddik, this is a Hailula. Rabbi Shimon, this was his great day of joy. Back to the Idra. Rabbi Abba rose from behind Rabbi Shimon's shoulders. Rabbi Elazar continued sitting before Rabbi Shimon. Rabbi Shimon said, "Arise, my son, for another will sit in that place." Basically, he was summoning a tzaddik from the upper world. We don't know who it was. Rabbi Shimon wrapped himself, sat down and said a verse, basically, based on the Tehilim that we say in the Halal, "Lo ametim yehalo luka," that the dead do not praise God, nor do those who go down into silence, into sheol. So what does it mean that the dead do not praise God? That surely means those who are called dead, even when they are alive. What is life? Life is God. God is living, right? As we say in the Torah, you are bound to Hashem, your God. You are all living today. Basically, at the very end, so Rabbi Shimon, I'm skipping a few parts over here, "But those who are called alive are different. The Holy One, blessed be he, desires their honor." Rabbi Abba recalls, "I was writing, in the middle of quoting a verse, Rabbi Shimon stopped and said the word Chaim," right? "Matam advekim," these are the words with which Rabbi Yehuda's life departed, so to speak. There's an obvious idea here that his life clearly didn't depart. It was just transitioning, because the last word on his lips were Chaim, life. Rabbi Shimon stopped at the word Chaim. "I waited, wanting to continue, but did not raise my head to see why Rabbi Shimon had stopped, for I was unable to look at the great light that was shining around him. Suddenly, I heard a voice call out a verse with the word Chaim. Then another voice called out an additional verse. I fell to the ground and wept. When the fire and the light departed, I saw the great light Rabbi Shimon had passed away. He was lying on his right side, and his face was smiling." What a way to go. That is the end of the story. This is the story of Rabbi Shimon. The last day of his life was the day that he revealed the greatest secrets of the Kabbalah, of mysticism. And this is, and this day was, it was a day of great rejoicing, as we as we mentioned above, right? It's called a Hailula. So these were the deep, secret mysteries of the world that Rabbi Shimon was sharing with his students, and they ultimately became recorded in the book called the Zohar. And this is why, to this day, we rejoice on Lag Baomer. And now you know the reason for the bonfire. Ben, please.
Yeah, I wanted to know, you said the intra is dresh?
The Idra?
Yeah.
The Idra was the mikom Hadisha, was the place where they would do the threshing, the threshing floor.
Agisha?
You mean in Hebrew? What is that?
Approaching?
No, 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 not dishad, dishad, dalid yud shinhei.
Oh, dalid, okay, dishad. Okay. Like threshing through it. Is that what it means?
Well, literally, it was the threshing floor. It was, it was
Like threshing through the wheat, you say dishad.
Dishad. So dishad is the process when they would, you know, they would stamp on the kernels to break kernel away from the from the chaff.
Right. Thank you, thank you.
Practically, it was a wide-open space that was available for everyone to sit and study. But it's just interesting that the Idra was actually a threshing, was actually a threshing floor. But as I said, that is, it's very connected to the whole mystical process and our Jewish work that we do even today. So we see, so we see now from this great story with Rabbi Shimon, we understand why we have a bonfire on Lag Baomer. Because it's replicating that light enveloped his house, that enveloped his person, and that was, of course, an expression. It was a manifestation of the Shekhina, of the Divine Presence. So yes, Susan, unmute.
So what you're saying is that as he was transitioning to the next level, there was a physical fire, and he told everybody to leave except his two sons?
Except his son and one of his close disciples.
And they were the only ones that were given the mystical information?
They were the only ones that could take the heat.
I see. Okay.
Okay, and the information, whatever information was meant to be given over, Rabbi Abba transcribed, and it was given over. But they couldn't necessarily take it in person. Now, one other point, you said it was a physical fire. I don't believe so. I don't believe that it was a physical fire. I think that it
Was more, so it was a spiritual fire then?
It was a spiritual fire, a fire that was on the level where people of a higher caliber were able to see that fire.
Okay.
This is reported about many great holy people. When they were buried, that there was a pillar of fire going in front of their coffin. But only people of a different, shall we say, of a different security level were able to
No, I understand what you're talking about.
It didn't, it didn't burn the grass on the sides of the of the road, you know? It wasn't a fire danger. It didn't create a conflagration or anything.
More than one Hebrew word for fire?
Burning bush didn't burn either.
Right, right? There you go. But that was, yeah, was that a physical fire? It's a good question.
Really? I don't, well
So is there a different word for fire? Well, there are different words that are used. There's the Aramaic word that would be used over here, which, all of this from the Zohar, you heard about the guy who studied, he wanted to study Kabbalah. And he went and he said, "Okay, I gotta learn Hebrew." And he starts learning Hebrew, and it takes him a year so he can read the Hebrew, and he said it's another five years so he can really understand the Hebrew. And now, hu yachol edaber yivrit hu, hu pasut hu, hu mumche hu yachol likroh lahabin, he can read and understand Hebrew. He's so happy that he can now open up the Zohar. He opens up the Zohar, and he's very surprised to find it's not written in Hebrew. It's written in Aramaic, Aramit. The same language as the Talmud, a little bit of a different style, but it's written in Aramaic. So here, the Hebrew word would be nura. The Aramaic word for fire is nura. And in Hebrew, I don't know that there's another word for fire, not one that comes to mind.
It was confusing, because when you, the way the story sounded like it was a physical fire, but not in actuality. When, sometimes when I see someone is on fire, I know that they're absorbing a lot of information at one time and being able to explain what what's going on in a spiritual and by also by speaking. But sometimes when somebody's on fire, you can't even, you can't even speak.
Sure.
It's like
I think there is a different word for fire in Hebrew too. But like medura, when we were lighting the fire for the holiday, we used to call it a medura.
So medura, the meaning of medura is bonfire.
Bonfire.
Bonfire. So when you take that fire and you put it on a wick, we call it an air.
Right.
When you take it and put it in, you know, put logs around and light it, it's called a medura.
Rabbi?
Yes.
I'm sure probably Bensy would know this better than me. Isn't there a word like lo haba, something flaming?
Lahava is the flame. Yes, lahava is the flame. Very good. So there's different parts of the fire and different descriptions, right? But the word fire itself is esh.
I was thinking Rabbi Shel Havis.
Shel Havis, okay. So that's a good word. So Shel Havis is certainly connected with the word lahav. So they're all different iterations of the fire. So yeah, these are, I guess, other good words. Shel Havit. So but Shel Havit is, again, it's going to be referring to the flames of fire.
Right. Thank you.
So so it's very appropriate. So here we're talking, but of course, this whole discussion is really talking about the spiritual fire, that internal, that internal flame, and that becomes, again, it becomes apparent to those who can see it. And some of us also can get a certain sense. You can hear somebody talking, or you can perceive somebody's holiness. And this is all, this is all a sense of a certain level of esh, of a fire that that is enveloping them. But it's not, it's not a very common thing. It's not a normal thing. But Rabbi Shimon Bar Yochai, of course, this was, this is what his entire life was about. So I'd like to just mention
Rabbi?
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to make it clear for myself and, you know, maybe others. These terms, all these different terms for flames, fire, and so on, there's no distinction made with respect to particularly a spiritual fire or a physical fire in terms of the actual vocabulary words. Am I right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
We have the word Shel Havit, yudke, being used in the Song of Songs, referring to the passionate fire of the heart, the love of the heart. And very similar to in the English language, you know, when you're going to be talking about, you know, burning passion, right? There, you know, these are, these are words, but they're, but they're, of course, they're metaphors to a certain degree.
Burning love too.
Huh?
Burning love.
Burning love, right? So moving on, I'd like to, I'd like to share with you a little bit about the book that I wrote, which is called The Four Keys of Kabbalah. You have a copy of it over here. And Rabbi Smith will have a few copies of this. He'll have some copies of this available, hopefully, in the next week or two. So The Four Keys of Kabbalah, A Spiritual Guide to Finding Meaning and Purpose in Your Life. So this book goes through four steps to really understanding why we are here, what existence is all about, and really adding a depth, a depth and profundity to our, to understanding our purpose, really, every single day. And particularly, as we, as we encounter difficult situations, whether they be external, or whether they just be in our own mind, or our life situations, to really realize our purpose in this world. So I'd like to start off with with Kabbalah Key number one. So this is a theme that's spoken about. Actually, before I get to the Kabbalah Key number one, I would like to, I would like to say another, shall we say, a little bit of a disclaimer, that I think that today, when we talk about studying Kabbalah, you could, you could go online, or you could go in person, and you could find a dozen, a dozen different flavors of Kabbalah, of people teaching Kabbalah. And and I would like to say that many of them are appropriate.
Or not?
What? Many of the things that you might find are appropriate. But there are also some teachings of Kabbalah that have veered away. The word Kabbalah, a lot of people don't realize, Kabbalah actually means something that was received.
Yes.
Right? It was something Kabbalah. In Hebrew, that's the word for a receipt. If you go to the store and you buy something, you get a Kabbalah. You get a, you get a receipt. So it truly means to receive. And one of the cardinal rules in the studying, the mystical levels, is that it had to be, really be from a master teaching the students, and you had to be grounded in a school, in the study of Kabbalah, that was accepted. There are a few individuals that decided to go and kind of create their own thing with it. And one has to be careful. You can definitely speak to Rabbi Smith if you're concerned, or you want to know if you're on the right track. Personally, what I have found most meaningful is the Kabbalistic tradition, the way that it's come down to to the Arizal, Rabbi Isaac Luria, who lived in the city of Tzfat, lived five hundred years ago. And through him, eventually, I would say, through the Hasidic movement, they took these ideas of Kabbalah and really put them forth in a way that we can understand it, and we can comprehend it, and we can apply it to our life. So Kabbalah is not meant so that we should go flying high. Kabbalah is meant that we should be aware of God flying high, and we are grounding it below. We're bringing it down here. Okay? And this is a very important distinction. A lot of times, when people study Kabbalah, basically, it's no, wow, wow, it's so amazing. It's so mind-blowing. We're talking about this world and that world, and it might be mind-blowing. But more importantly, it has to be mind moving. It has to bring us to a deeper place, to a better place in how we deal with other people, to a better place in how we serve God and how we do the mitzvot. This is, this is this is the essential part of Kabbalah. Even the book, the Zohar, a lot of people don't realize that the Zohar is based on Bereshit, Shemot, VaYikra, B'Amidbar, Divarim, and other books of the T'Naf. The Zohar is the mystical idea behind the Torah. So just to, just to reiterate, when we're talking about Kabbalah, one does need to be careful what they're, you know, what they're selecting to choose. And some things you might find, they might seem very inspirational. But one does need to be careful to make sure that they're studying a, and for me, the way that Kabbalah becomes expressed in Hasidis, in Hasidic philosophy, this to me is the most applicable. And in that case, also, we don't have to worry about the the Shekhina that we just read about, that that we might not be appropriate vessels for at this point. When it's brought into the words of Hasidut, the Hasidic philosophy, this is bringing it in a way that we can really internalize it and make it real in our life. So having said that, now going to the, to the Four Keys of Kabbalah. So
Can I say just one more? Thank you. I just forgot to say that all forms of fire or flames, they're always seeking to go up. You'll never see them anywhere, any other way. They'll always be seeking to go up.
They're always seeking to go up. Exactly, exactly. That's another big analogy of the, of what the Zohar is, is really, you know, and what Kabbalistic study is all about, is bringing out that flame that we each have inside of us, which is the reason why you walk into a shul and people are praying like this. People are praying, and sometimes you'll even see rabbis, they're talking, and they're like chuckling back and forth, and you're saying, "What's wrong with it? Why is he going back and forth?" Stop! Someone's not used to it. But when we're davening, we're like a flickering flame, right? That is always moving back and forth, because we're desiring to to connect to our source above, which is really what so much of Kabbalah is all about. Okay, so Okay, so. A lot of, the first key of Kabbalah is very much connected to an idea brought forth in the Tanya, the second book of Tanya, Sharah Hayyid, Vohamuna, the, the books of, the gates of unity and faith. And what Rabbi Shner Zalman of Liyadi describes there is all of existence. Where, where does existence come from? You know, we, we read the story of creation in the Torah. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. And we read it, and we're, we have faith, we are ma'mineem, bnei ma'mineem. We are believers, the children of believers. And we, yes, in the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. By yom ha'lokim, yehi or, and God said, let there be light. And there was light. By yehi or, there was light. And everything God just spoke, and the things came about. And our sages say that with ten utterances, God brought about existence. Okay? You got a problem with that? I don't think so. We all, we take it, we say, okay. This is, this is what happened. God spoke, and it came to being. But Kabbalah gives us a much deeper insight to what was going on there. To what was really happening there. And I found a, I found a an idea, a theory from a physicist. His name is Jonathan Wheeler. And Jonathan Wheeler, he had a theory that he called it by bit. What he meant with this is, he said that in our age of technology, we have to realize that at the depth of everything, even deeper than matter, right? Used to be scientists would look at matter, and they thought that matter was matter, that matter really mattered. Then eventually we realized, no, there's actually an energy, right? That E equals mc squared. We all know that, right? That somehow or another, energy and mass are related, just have to multiply by the speed of light squared. Okay, whatever that is. So we realize that it's all, there's all energy, right? But what Jonathan Wheeler said is that today, we realize that there's something even deeper. There's something even more significant, and that is information. That any piece of information, anything that exists, has to have inside of it information telling it what it is. And also how it's meant to interact with everything around it. And he called that it from bit, that every it that exists has to have a byte of information, a bit, as in like, you know, 64-bit computers, has to have a byte of information that is going to tell it what it is. It was very interesting when I read that because this is exactly what Rabbi Shner Zalman explains in Tanya, that everything that exists, anything that we see, our own self, the, the universe, time and space, everything has inside of it divine information telling it what it is. And these are the ten utterances. When we read in the Torah that God spoke, this was really the divine energy bringing about existence. And so deeper than the matter, deeper than the cells, deeper than the atoms, behind everything, there is a divine information that is telling this what it is. And so there's a verse that forever, "Oh God, your words are standing in heaven." And the Belshamtof explains that what this means is that the words that God spoke 3,000, 5,782 years ago, those words themselves are in anything that exists. Now, in our day and age, we have a wonderful analogy to understand this. You know, we're each looking at a screen. And we're looking at an image of many different people. But it's really, it's really just a program, right? It's a program. This program is called Zoom. And if you open up the program, what you're going to find is a bunch of letters and characters strung together.
Rabbi?
Yes.
Um, I'm concerned about the relationships between these bits of information, especially if they're animals like we are. And, you know, they say, for example, that love is eternal. When you have a really good friend, or you really love someone, and that lasts like a whole human lifetime, is this also like enshrined in heaven? Is this part of the information? It seems like it's, it's actual, it's a type of energy, but I, I, I'm wondering, is there any information regarding that? What it is?
That's a very good question. I'm gonna, is your name actually Moshe?
No, no, my husband is Moshe. He's sitting with me right now, but I'm the one who asked this question. Phileis Kissel, Panina Saris, my Hebrew name.
Your name is Panina?
In, in Hebrew, in English, it's Phyllis.
Phyllis. Okay, so Phyllis, when I, when I see, when I see Moshe talking, and I hear your voice, now I'll know it's Phyllis. Okay, good.
Well, sometimes it's him, but then you'll hear him.
Well, then I'll, then I'll know. I'll know. I'll know when it's Moshe. Moshe, say something.
Say something.
I'm here.
Ah, there he is. All right.
He didn't have the same question I had.
A very appropriate question coming from someone whose name means love. Phyllis. Right? What does Phyllis mean? Phyllis is from the Latin.
Well, it was really after my grandfather Pindkas, and in, in England, it was Philip.
But Phyllis, Phyllis means love. So I'm not going to have an answer for you right now. It's a good question. But I, you know, it's, it's a good question. We'll see if we have time to address it later on, okay? But it's, but let's, let's put that one on hold, okay?
Yes.
So everything that we see has this divine information inside of it. And this is the amazing idea. So when we're looking, I was using the analogy of the computer. So we see a reality in front of us, right? We see this rabbi talking, we see all of the students listening, and we see, you know, whatever is going on on the, on the screen. We see the, the background, we see everyone's walls, and, and, you know, everything going on. But it's all just really, at its core, it's just a string of information in the program, telling everything where it needs to be, right? It's, it's, it's a computer program. So when God created the world, there is, so to speak, I'm not saying it's exactly the same thing. Of course, it's not, but at least by way of analogy, when God created the world, he used a divine program. So everything, anything that exists, and on, on a general level, Phyllis, love as well. If love exists, then it's got to have a divine information inside of it. So we each have, we, the whole world, right? So if I, if I look at this, at this glass of water, well, there's no water in it now, but the water has divine information, the glass has divine information. Most importantly, you know where the most important divine information is? It's inside of your own self. And that is what we call the nishama, the soul, that is a part of God that's inside of us, that gives us our divine consciousness, our divine awareness. And when you look at another human being, you have the ability to, ability to see the godliness in that person, as I was mentioning earlier, to see the nishama in that other person. And anything that you encounter in life. So you encounter, let's say, you, you you're at the store, and you, you encounter food, and you look at food, and you say, oh, that looks so good. Is that, is that a divine opportunity? Well, yes, you can say, is that food kosher? Does it have a kosher symbol on it? Can I eat it, right? And if it is, you put it in your cart. If not, you put it back. That's, that's bringing out the divine information in real life. So everything in the world has a divine reality to it, anything that exists. Again, if we're looking at galaxies above, or we're looking at our very own self in the mirror or another person. So I, I ask you a question. So before I ask the question, I would like to share with you Kabbalah Key Number One. And that is, all that exists has a divine spark within it, an aspect of the infinite within the finite. That's Kabbalah Key Number One.
That's what Hindus believe.
So. This is. Now, imagine you woke up in the morning. You woke up in the morning, and you're able to be aware of your own godly soul, that I am part of God, not in this world. I have a part of God inside of me. You wake up in the morning, you realize that. And you look at your beloved, you see the, the divine spark within the person you live, the people you live with in the house. And you go to work, and you look all around, and everything that's happening, you see godliness in everything. You see godliness everywhere. You go to synagogue to pray, and of course, you pray because you're aware of godliness. Could you imagine such a life where all you see is the godliness in yourself, and the godliness in everyone around you, and the godliness in every single creature in the world? And you look at the mountains, you're in Florida. You look at the ocean, you look at the ocean, you look at the palm trees, you look at the, are they called palmetto bugs? You look at, you look at everything, you see the godliness brimming inside of it. Every situation. Wouldn't that be amazing to live life that way? Wouldn't that be an amazing way to, to, to breathe and realizing the godly life in every breath that you take? Wow. Amazing. Every step. And all of a sudden, you get lost someplace because you took a wrong turn, because your wife was talking to you, your husband was talking to you, you took a wrong turn, you say, ah, thank God, this situation that I'm in right now is exactly where God wants me to be. Thank you, spouse. Or your spouse insults you, and you say the same thing. Thank you so much for those words. But you don't say it sarcastically. That's the trick. You, you realize the godliness in everything. That would be such a, so I have a question for you. So if you're like me, your day has not been going quite that way. If you're like me. Ju- ju- just one second, Phyllis. I want to just finish this concept. Just one second, please. Thank you. If you're like me, your day has not quite been going that way. And sometimes you look at other people, and you don't see the godliness. You see other qualities that we're not going to talk about in public. You look at yourself, and maybe you see, ah, you don't see the godliness in yourself. And you don't see the godliness in the things around you. And when difficulties happen, you get upset, you get angrier, you get sad, or you get anxious. And if you're like me, all, this is, this is a greater reality. So I have a question for you. Wouldn't it made, wouldn't it have made a lot more sense for God to create a world where we can all see the godliness in everything? Me, I have to put in effort and work, and sometimes a lot of effort, to find godliness in the world, to find godliness in my own self, and to be aware of that. That takes so much effort. What if God, I don't know why God didn't think of this, what if God would have created, created a world where the godliness was apparent? Where we could all feel it, we could all realize it. And Yehuda is gonna give away the answer here. Would that be a wonderful world, Yehuda?
No. No.
Go ahead.
Because that would eliminate free choice.
Uh, would eliminate free choice. Very good. Very good. So doesn't sound so bad. All right, so I don't have any free choice. So I'll, I'll do, I'll, but I'll, but life will be so much better, wouldn't it?
No.
I'm gonna say what you're saying, but in, in slightly different words. Very good point. Such a world would be wonderful. It would just be missing three things. Meaning, purpose, and value. Meaning, it would all, it would be missing, although we would see the meaning of everything, we would have no personal meaning. And I'll talk about it in a moment. We'll understand soon why. And all of those things derive, like what Yehuda said, from free choice, the fact that we have free choice. We'll get into it in a moment. So that world of apparent godliness would be great, but there's something much greater. There's a much greater possibility, and that is the world that God created. And now we're going to get on to Kabbalah Key Number Two. And I think we, we might be able to cover two of the Kabbalakis today. I think I'm continuing.
Can I say something about the post?
But one second, I, I, I cut Phyllis off. So Phyllis, you, you had a question or comment?
Yes, I did. I, I, I really feel where, where I've been living, I, I really feel and see the godliness in each of these wonderful creatures and plants that live around here. I love my neighbors, I love this place, and yet, because of the, the globalist challenge and, and the troubles in other states, people are running down here, and our, our owner, whose daughter now is power of attorney, she decided to sell the apartment. So we had to move to a less, thank God, not that far away, but it doesn't have the same animals and plants and so on, and immediate neighbors, and, and I mean, it's gonna be a lot harder for me to see the godliness in everything here. I was like, it was such a blessing.
Right, right. Phyllis, Phyllis.
I don't know. I think it's hard for me because it's very depressing to have to leave all this wonderful.
So what if I told you?
Luxurious, but it's, I see the godliness in everything here.
Phyllis, what if I told you that every step that you're taking is bringing you exactly to the place where God needs you, where God wants you to be?
I have to assume that.
Right? But it takes effort and work. It's not always obvious, is it?
No.
No, not at all. But you know what? God will open your eyes and your mind and your heart to be able to see and feel this, God willing. Ben?
Yeah, I wanted to say that godliness is all over. We, we just don't see it if you don't think about it. If you think about it, you see it right away.
That's what I said.
Especially this time of, of year, when all the trees are blooming. It's, it's wonderful work, you know, and you, and you can't miss it if you think about it.
Right. You know what? I, I live in a place, I don't, I don't mean to, I don't mean to show off, but I'll, I'll, I'll share with you a picture.
I live in Chicago.
I'll, I'll share with you where I live, and what I, when I wake up in the morning, what I see is a place, whoops. I'm just going to share the screen here briefly, so you can see where I live. This is what I wake up to see in the morning. It's called Lucas Valley. It's a beautiful country-like living. And I have to look at, you see, you see right here, you see the, the hills and the mountains. This is what I see when I wake up in the morning. And I have to admit to you, when I look out of my window, this is my view. Right? I have to admit to you, sometimes I look at those mountains, I look at them, and I say, wow, that is so beautiful. But you know what I don't say, or what I don't think without thinking about it? I don't say, and I don't think, look at the manifestation of godliness in this world.
Yeah.
Right? So that takes the greater effort. And like I said, godliness is not apparent, but this is exactly for a reason. And I want to get to the reason. I just want to cover an analogy. And we're going to get to Kabbalah Key Number Two. So I'm going to tell a story about two different types of teachers. Teacher number one. She is an amazing teacher. Anything, have you ever gone to a class to learn about something, but there were like five things you needed to know before you learned this information? And so you're, you're, you're like, you know, you're like treading water, you're like, you feel, you don't know what's going on because, because she's using terms that you don't know. And so this teacher is not like that at all. She teaches everything that you need to know to know. because he's using terms that you don't know. And so this teacher is not like that at all. She teaches everything that you need to know to know the point. And then she teaches the point so clearly, so lucidly. Everything is just brilliant. She has charts and she has diagrams and she has analogies. And when you learn that concept, every single student in that class gets it. Have you ever had such a teacher, such a professor?
Yes.
So clear, ah, it's a machayit. It's just such, it's such a pleasure, right?
Right.
Now I'm gonna move on to a, a teacher number two. Teacher number two tells you everything you need to know to know the point. And talks around the point. But this teacher, he bends over backwards to not tell you what the point is. And the students are looking and they're asking, what is the point? What is the point? And he has to hold himself back. He will not tell the students what the point is. Why not?
He wants you to reach, reach the point by yourself.
He wants the students to find it on their own. Exactly. Is it more frustrating? Yes. Is it difficult?
A little, yeah.
Sometimes, right?
Yeah.
You know the joy when someone asks you a riddle and then gives you time and then you figure out the answer, right? That's, that's a great joy, right? Those are the riddles that you remember, right? The first teacher would tell you the riddle, then tell you the answer. The second teacher will not reveal it to you at all. But I can tell you, it takes longer, but at the end of the course, every student knows the information. The students take the test and everybody knows it because they found it on their own. Let me ask you a question. What's the difference between the students of teacher number one and teacher number two? What's the difference? Both of them know the information, both of them have the information, both of them learned, both of them passed the tests remarkably well. But there is a very big difference between the relationship to the information of students of teacher number one and the students of teacher number two. Can you tell me what that is?
Rabbi?
Yes.
One is trained and one is educated.
One is trained and one is educated.
Correct.
Okay, well, you're, 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 you're saying that you know, one is basically being, being spoon-fed, right? They're trained, they're being told exactly and they're doing according to their training.
But they're not really being, but they're not really being helped because they're not using their own mind to to create.
I believe, I believe that one, one is teaching creative people. And the second one is teaching followers. And it's actually very well known that it is Israeli system of education and Chinese. And in Chinese system of education, you're completely follower. The students are expected to repeat exactly what teacher did in everything, in writing and everything, all exercises that they do. It's well known in a pedagogy as a system which works very well for a certain culture and for certain type of you know, purposes. Israeli are so much more into creating things. That's why so much technology, so many discoveries are coming from that educational system.
So you're all saying that teacher number two is the much better?
I think it depends. It depends what level is your student at. Some students need to have this base where they really have to understand the concept before they could really go and discover things themselves. It's very much up to a, a experienced teacher, in my opinion, even though each, each one of them have their own classes and
Let me, let me bring you a counterpoint, Anna. And that is that each and every student has something to discover.
Yeah, I agree.
Right? The problem is when we're teaching a curriculum to, you know, to, to 20 students and we're assuming they're all the same level and some can have the opportunity to discover and some will never discover it. But if you really are committed to the teaching through discovery method, every, what you have to find is what can this student discover? And allow them to discover it.
But it can be done mostly in individual studies, not as much in a group study.
It becomes much more challenging, agreed. So I'm gonna tell you the difference between teacher number one and teacher number two. Now, actually not the difference between the teachers, but between the information. And um and Susan, you, you touched upon it, but students number one, the students of teacher number one have the information. The students of teacher number two own the information. Why is it theirs? Because they have discovered it, right? When you discover something, it is yours, it becomes yours, you have ownership. Ownership is the only way for you to find meaning. Oftentimes in the world, people want to go to a class or they want to hear a speaker, they want to discover meaning. Meaning is only going to happen when you find it, when you discover it. Then you're gonna have meaning, you're gonna have purpose and you're gonna have value. You see? And that is why God created a world that every part of godliness in this world is concealed.
Rabbi?
Yeah, Phyllis, ju- just one second, Phyllis, sorry. Every part of godliness in this world is concealed. Why is it concealed? So that we can well, it's covered, right? So that we can discover it. That's what discovery is. That is the purpose of the Jewish people, that is the purpose of the Torah, for us to find the divine that is hidden underneath everything in this world. That we're in a situation that's now difficult. Everything was great, but now we're being shifted to a new situation. I have to dig. I have to use my soul. I have to use the divine knowledge to find something deeper. I have to find the godliness that is right here, right now. And that leads us to Kabbalah key number two. Oh, let me share a screen, hold on a sec. Kabbalah key number two is the divine spark is concealed within a negative energy field. Readily perceived. Any godly, everything in the world is God. It all has God inside of it, but that God is that aspect of God, that spark of God in everything concealed. It's hidden from us. Well, you have already figured out why it's hidden from us. Why is it hidden from us? So that we can find it. Okay? People forget that, there's a, there's a major ingredient of teaching through discovery. And people don't realize this. One of the most important ingredients to teaching through discovery is concealment. I'll tell you, I'll give you another analogy. It probably would be better if I just told you a joke. But here's the thing about a joke. When you tell a joke, you have to be very careful not to leak the punchline. You ever listen to somebody who's telling a joke and they kind of hint to the punchline in the middle of it? Then they get to the punchline, it's eh? The whole job of the setup is to conceal the punchline and to misdirect. So that when you hear the punchline, it's gonna be what we call in English, funny. Right? God, when he created this world, he hid himself. He concealed himself within every single aspect of this world. He's like teacher number two. Not because he wants to be difficult, but because he wants to give us the most glorious opportunity of having, having meaning, purpose and value in our life. We'll continue this, but there's probably a few questions or comments. I bet you, Phyllis
I have one.
Something to share.
Rabbi?
Yes.
Uh, i- i- it occurs to me that the distinction between the first type of student, they have the information which they're getting from the teacher in terms of factual information. But the second type of student understands the principles behind what is being taught so that he could more readily reconvey it to others. And he knows exactly the process that's going on underneath, the principles behind which the uh information is being discussed. He understands it. There's a difference between knowing information and understanding what's really going on underneath conceptualizing it.
Excellent point. Ezra?
I think the difference between the two sets of students is number one. They can only regurgitate back what they've learned. They can't extrapolate. The second set of students, basically, they have learned the process. And so therefore, if you give them a new problem, which is basically a small modification from the old one, they can deduce the answer based upon the methodologies that they have learned. Now, to respond about to Anna's point about Israeli students and Chinese students, the Israeli students at the undergraduate level are no different than the Chinese students. They both learn processes and they are required to regurgitate the processes. It isn't until much later when they do their masters and PhD where they actually learn the process of going beyond what they've learned. Namely, knowing the basics and then using the basics to extend or to extrapolate to diff- to different things. And I can tell you that based upon the fact that I taught in Israel for a couple of years. And um, even a colleague of mine who's, who taught in Israel who has taught, who has been teaching in Israel for his entire life. That's basically what happens in Israel. As an undergraduate, you have to learn the process, the, the basics first, before you can do anything else. And then after that, you're being asked the masters and PhD level to, okay, you've learned the basics. Now what can you do with it in order to extend and, and solve this particular process? And I think that that the second set of students uh, based upon how the teacher teaches does, does exactly that. He teaches them the process by which they can learn, let's say, new materials.
Thank you, thank you for that, Ezra. But I think it doesn't, you know, it doesn't change the basic underlying idea of, of what we're sharing here.
I'm not saying it's not.
Okay, I just wanted, I want to make sure we're on the same page that way. Okay. Uh, Robert was, uh
My take of it is, and we use two maybe wrong analogies, um, because of what Ezra said about the second teacher. But when Anna talks about China, it's a totalitarian society and children and you're not educated and you can't be imaginative because the state controls what you can do in your life. Okay? So that's very different from, let's say, growing up, well, Israel is a democracy. They may have a different method in educating, but people have the opportunity to eventualize who they are. And maybe that's the process within Israel, but China is a, you know, people, you look what happens to you. You go to jail or you're disappeared. Um, if you're, if you are out of step with what the government wants you to think and you understand what you need to think to be able to survive. That's, you know.
Yeah, I agree with you, Robert, completely. Everything is an attitude. That's if, if the attitude of the society around you that you're not allowed to discover anything, you're supposed to follow, it's one thing, one result. But if the attitude of the country, we are new, we are young, we are here to discover everything that it is, children learn how to do it from the birth. Yeah, I agree with Ezra too, that you need to learn the basic first. But you know, the attitude, in my opinion, is everything. That's my kind of life experience. It's very, it matters a lot. Okay, thank you.
Rabbi?
Well, just one second, Phyllis, David was raising his hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gonna unmute?
Yeah, um, the, when you were talking about before about the sages that entered the garden of Eden and then come out and the possibility that Kabbalah could be dangerous if it's not guided in the proper way. So there's a, a brief analogy that I heard uh, a long time ago, that said that a man was walking through the forest and he was so fascinated with the, with the brightness of the moon and the beauty of the stars. And he was so intrigued in looking up and looking at this beauty, he fell into a hole. So when he came out of the hole, he realized that the light that's being provided from the sun and the moon is there to light his way so that it doesn't fall into a hole rather than to concentrate on the um mystical ideas of the moon and the stars and the other things itself.
Beautiful analogy.
Right, all the aesthetics is, you know, that can blind you without realizing you're walking into a hole.
Sure. Sure. Good, so I just want to bring it back to the, to the, to the point of the, of the four keys of Kabbalah, if I may. I know, I, when I get into, bring it into pedagogy, because it's very exciting, because it's a very exciting topic. But I'm using this as an analogy really of how God created the world, of why things, why the truth is not apparent and why finding God is not apparent, it's there specifically, so we should be like students of teacher number two, look for it and find it. That's why when we have a piece of, when we have a piece, when we have some food, for instance, what do we do? We recite a blessing. Ideally, we're supposed to realize the godliness in this food. That's what we're do, what we're supposed to be doing when we recite the blessing.
As you're in California, you know, one of the things that we learned, I lived in California for many years, and the theme for California is eureka. I find it, I found it. And so that's part of the thinking process is you're led to finally have that eureka moment in your life.
Which we can only do because it's concealed.
Rabbi?
Right?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, was that you, Phyllis?
Yes, it was. Um, I wanted to, uh, I, I'm very, very grateful uh, to Ezra for the comment that he made because um, it's, I, I mean, I have some familiarity with what's going on now in the uh, medical uh, industry in Israel and it's, it's true that on the lower levels, I mean, there's a great deal of uh, compliance with whatever the government policy has been in general. And it's, it's like a lockstep thing, but then of those who have gone beyond that, the researchers and those who are more uh, engaging in critical thought and looking at all the different sorts of uh possible therapies are the ones that are finding uh, the kaddishim and the things that maybe therapies that others are, are sort of considered verboten on the, on the lower levels because they don't or they aren't lockstep with government policy. So it's, 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 it's so true, everything, I'm, I'm so grateful to Ezra for actually bringing a bit hands-on examples because I, I've seen it myself. There are brilliant, brilliant professors and there are brilliant doctors and rebaim who have challenged uh, uh, what might be considered you know, a so-called common knowledge that isn't. And, and uh, they're finding out much more that can be of help, but it, it, it really gets into the higher levels of critical thought. So thanking Ezra and yes, I, I agree very much based on what I've heard and what I'm seeing myself.
Beautiful. Oh, by the way, there's also uh, something along the lines of that which is concealed. Something concealed that is very, that, that's what, that's what makes it valuable. That's what value in life is because we're finding something that's concealed. You have this little thing, a beautiful thing, that you have to dive into the sea and find like a shell around it. And you have to open up the shell, the clam, and what do you find inside of it? You find a beautiful pearl, if you're lucky. Right? So that's also your name, right? Panina. So why is it valuable? It's valuable because it's something that's hidden and concealed. That's what gives it value, value and meaning. But it's also, it's the internal, that's the word panina comes from the word uh, panim, meaning that it's on the inside, the internal, the internal that is concealed, that it's our job to That it's our job to reveal through our Jewish work, which, God willing, we'll get to a little bit more next week.